Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. It is 5:01 PM to January 6th. 5:01 PM organizational school board meeting we'd like to call the order. I said I'd do that without smiling and I still smiled. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now looking for approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. I'd like to note, Devany, that Board Member Jeff Hegley is not present for tonight's board meeting. All right, so tonight is our organizational board meeting. Any member of the board may nominate any other board member, including themselves. Nominations do not require a second. All nominations require three calls for nominations before closing out the nomination process. If a single nomination is made, the board chair will announce election by acclamation. If there are multiple nominations, we will do a vote. All right, so we will move right along into our nominations. Our first one on the agenda is opening up nominations for the chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Seben as chairperson.
Is there any other nominations?
Second.
Any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, nominations for board chair is now closed. That's Jamie Seben is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to do so. Record it in the minutes. All right, next we will move on to opening up nominations for Vice Chair Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Casey Root for Vice Chair Treasurer.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? If there's no further nominations, nominations for Vice Chair Treasurer is now closed. Casey Root is the only candidate nominated for the Vice Chair Treasurer position. I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes. Next, we will open nominations for the clerk.
I'd like to nominate Melissa Curtis.
Any other nominations? We have to do this three times, folks. Any other nominations? If there's no further nominations, we will now close nominations. And Melissa Curtis is the only candidate nominated for the clerk position. I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes. Next, order of business is action to appoint superintendent to the board as a non-voting ex officio member. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Action, motion passes 5-0. Item E, designation of the official newspaper of District Number 882, which is the Monticello Times. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item F, designation of school board committee assignments. This one, for those of you in the audience that don't know, the school board members are on multiple committees' assignments and liaisons on top of their normal board duties. And so these are something that has been pre-assigned and posted for all the board members to go through. And so we just need a motion to approve the committee assignments as posted.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. On to item G, designation of official district depositories. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item H, establish school board meeting structure for the regular school board meetings to take place on the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. The first Monday of each month is a regular school board meeting beginning at 5:00 PM. These meetings will typically be followed by a work session. In the event that a work session or regular school board meeting is canceled due to unseen circumstances such as inclement weather, the meeting will be rescheduled for the following day at the same time. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item I, motion to participate in federally funded programs. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item J, legal counsel and authorized contracts. Our legal counsel of Squires, Walzberger, and Mace, who've been the same firm that we've used for a lot of years. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item K, school district authorized contracts for legal counsel. That would be our Superintendent Eric Olson, Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder, Human Resource Director Rob Danicker, School Board Chair and Director of Special Education John Weekly. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item L, designation of authorized personnel to enter into signed contractual agreements with our district. Superintendent Eric Olson, Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder, and Human Resources Director Rob Danicker. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item M on the agenda, designation of authorized signatures to be accepted by the official depositories. That is the chairperson, Vice Chair Treasurer, Secretary Clerk, Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder, Controller Amy Stalbach, and Accountant Cindy Brenney. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. All right, good. Now we're on to item O. This is a resolution to approve annual designation of identified official with authority for MDE external user access recertification system.
The Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board and the Office of Higher Education require annual designation of an identified official with authority for each local educational agency that uses the Education Identity Access Management System. The IOWA is responsible for authorizing, reviewing, and recertifying user access for their local educational agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota enterprise identity and access management standard, which states that all user access rights the Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and certified at least annually. The IOWA will authorize user access to State of Minnesota education secure systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties and will revoke that user's access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties. Your school board or equivalent governing board must designate an IOWA to authorize user access to State of Minnesota education secure websites for your organization. This EDIAM board resolution must be completed and submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education annually, as well as any time there is a change in the assignment of the identified official with authority. It is strongly recommended that only one person at the local educational agency or organization, typically the superintendent or director, is designated. If the local educational agency or organization assigns this role to more than one person, identify each designated person in this board resolution. Do I just... That's good.
This is an action item.
Or second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. We're going to go back to item number N. Designation of authorized personnel to make electronic wire transfers. Superintendent Eric Olson, Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder, HR Manager Zach Harry, Payroll Specialist Tom Kirkhafer, Kit Hafer, and Controller Amy Stalbach. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. On to item P, which is a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations regarding the reduction and/or discontinuance of programs and positions and reasons therefore according to the statute.
Whereas the financial limitations of the district dictate that the school board must reduce expenditures and/or there has been a reduction in overall student enrollment, and whereas this reduction in expenditures and/or this decrease in student enrollment may necessitate the discontinuance or reduction of programs and/or the discontinuance or reduction of positions, and whereas a determination must be made as to whether programs or positions must be reduced and/or discontinued. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District 882 as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent and administration to consider the discontinuance and/or reduction of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the district and reduce expenditures and/or as a result of a reduction in enrollment and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, reduction of programs, discontinuance of positions, or the reduction of positions.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item Q, a resolution establishing combined polling places for a special school board election not held on the same day as a statewide election.
Okay, another long one. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 882, the State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot 11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms these precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot 11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or a municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. The combined polling place is the Monticello Community Center Gym, 505 Walnut Street, Monticello, Minnesota. This combined polling place serves as all territory in Independent School District 882, located in Becker Township, Big Lake City, Big Lake Township, Buffalo Township, Clearwater Township, Maple Lake Township, Monticello and Monticello Township, Otsego, and Silver Creek Township, all in Wright County, Minnesota. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205 dot 09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. As required by Minnesota Statute Section 204B dot 16 subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of a new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place location has been changed. The notice must be a non-oritable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it registrates status to challenged in the statewide registration system.
This is an action item.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Item R, designation of Devany Moore, Communication Specialist and School Board Liaison as the official parliamentarian for the Monticello School Board. This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. And we adjourn this meeting at 5:19 PM, followed by our regular school board meeting that we will start immediately after. All right, it is... Welcome, everyone. It is 5:20 PM on January 6th, 2025. Welcome to the Regular School Board Meeting of Independent School District Number 882. We are looking for approval of the consent of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Devany, I'd like to note that School Board Member Jeff Hegley is not present for this meeting. All right, we have no citizen comments tonight. So we'll move on to item number four, fiscal stability. Looking for approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Now we're on to item number five, collaborative collections. We have a resolution for acceptance of gifts that Superintendent Eric Olson will go over.
I have two to bring forward. Good Day Car Wash. They have contacted our activities director. Thank you. I have two to bring forward here today. Sounds much better. Thank you, Gavin. Good Day Car Wash, formerly known as Due North. They contacted activities director and would like to donate an ongoing monthly donation of $1,500 per month. And then that's to go to the activities department to support all the activities offered at the Monticello School District. If this ever stops, we will let you know of the cease notice. But otherwise, that is just an ongoing monthly donation. Also, I'd like to bring forward a great contribution from the American Legion Post 260, $1,500 for softball field improvements. So just a combination of some dirt work and some fencing. That's what that money will be used for. These are two great donations going in this meeting towards activities. But we want to continue to thank our community for the great support they give of all of our programs, whether they're academic activities and/or just the support for student needs.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. Good Day Car Wash, $1,500 ongoing monthly donation to be used by the activities director to support all of the activities offered by Monticello School District, and the American Legion Post 260 for $1,500 for softball field improvements.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. Now, we get to welcome up to the podium Monticello Middle School Dean of Students Katie Frick and Monticello Middle School Art Teacher Brittany Morrow to talk about the Middle School Unified Art Club proposal. Welcome.
Hopefully it could become a unified art club here at the Monticello Middle School. So for those of you that don't know what unified art is, it is going to be an art club after school for students of regular abilities and special abilities, bringing them together to collaborate, to make art, and to be seen. A lot of times these students, they can't have art because it doesn't fit into their schedule very well. And so what I'm looking to do is to bring them into the community more and to have them really be seen and to be heard. For the art club, I'm thinking about having a one-to-one ratio with students, two-to-one possibly, depending on how much interest there is and what the goal would be. I have a lot of objectives that I would love to go over when it comes to this art club, and I'm very excited about all of them. The biggest one that I really want to hit home on is I really want to encourage community engagement and really build on the community that Monticello Middle School already has. I think it is absolutely amazing and I love being the art teacher there, but I do think there is something missing, not having those kids have art while they are in the middle school. And so I really want the objective to be building on that community that is already there within the middle school. Project examples, I do have a bunch more than this. This is just a sample. I would be going off of a curriculum that was built by Special Olympics by an art teacher in Maple Grove, actually. And so depending on the students that are interested, who we get, I would be able to go through that entire curriculum and see what would fit the needs of the students specifically, and then we can tailor it to fit those students as well. So a couple of examples that I have here, identity collages, we have ceramic relief story quilts, we have a woven wall hanging, collaborative art projects. A lot of times these art projects are going to be students doing things separately and they learn from one another, but then there'll be plenty of times as well where they collaborate to make the art together as well. So the ideal scheduled meeting time, obviously this could differ based upon how many students are interested, what their schedules look like, what support looks like as well. I'm hoping it'd be about 3:00 to 4:30 PM after school, Monday through Wednesdays consistently each week from maybe March to April, sometime in there, just so we have enough time each week to get through a project and we're not starting something and then having to go back to it the next week when a club comes back around. So I've already been very vocal within the school, talking to people about who would be interested in doing a student-staff paraprofessional because obviously that is a very big one that needs to be considered for this club. Up here, I do have examples of two para-supporters that are already very interested in bringing this to the middle school. And for my first year, I would love to handpick specific students just to make sure that the club is very successful and we can start off on the right foot. And so I've been having those conversations with students and their parents, and these are just a few examples of people that are already interested. So some other details, I would love to also showcase this to the community once everything is done. So I did start a middle school art club and art show last year at the end of the year, and so at the end of this art club, depending on when that falls with my regular art show, I would love there also to be an art show for this as well to showcase them. So not only families can come and see what they've been doing, but the community can as well. And I would love to either get out on social media and start a social media page for this art club, art in general at the middle school, just so that can be promoted more, or just be on the Monticello social media page more as well. So some goals, foster creative expressionism, obviously facilitate artistic growth and skill development, as many as there is on there. Like I said, the one thing I am aiming to do is to build a strong supportive community within the middle school, because I do see there is a need for that based off of what I've experienced my last year here.
And I'm Katie Frick. I'm our Dean of Students and Activities Director at the middle school. And the final piece that we want to talk about just is that financial commitment. So with any new activity or club that we bring to our school, there is that financial commitment that we have. What makes this one a little bit different than our typical clubs? Typically, our clubs, as long as we get 20 students, that actually covers the cost of the advisor, and then anything additional to that goes to our club funds. But with this club, we are looking at that additional funding that we need for para-support, depending on what students we get. And so when we're looking at those additional fees that we would need funding, we are looking at some fundraising options. So at the middle school, we've been looking at some creative ways that we can fundraise, such as some different concessions, stands during events that we've been having. We're also looking at maybe bringing in some fundraising during the school day with lunch before and after school. And then we're also looking at some different grants around, and then Special Olympics is able to do some funding for our first year as well. So we're confident that we would be able to fund this appropriately, but that is just kind of a different financial commitment that is with this club that's not with some of our other ones.
That's about all I have for you guys. I wanted to keep it short, not take too much of your time, but I'm curious if you had any questions or comments that you'd want to talk about.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks for coming in to share this with us. You mentioned that you talked to the students and parents already.
Yes.
What would you say was the response from the parents?
I have so many people that are beyond ecstatic. I have not gotten feedback, pushback on this, and obviously I know that can come from different areas when it comes to parent schools, everything like that, but everyone is extremely excited and they think this is an amazing opportunity.
Okay. And then can you, and maybe this is for you, Ms. Frick, to elaborate on the lunch fundraiser you mentioned?
We're still figuring that one out. I have been working with Mr. Olson with some ideas of, like in the past, the middle school has had different opportunities to, like the slushy fund I was asking Mr. Colwell about, but there's some different things that they've done in the past. And I know the high school does some things too, such as their cafe, I'm getting looked, but some different ways of just being really creative that we can fundraise money that would directly go back to our students. And so just kind of trying to brainstorm some of those, and when Mr. Olson and I have connected, just to figure that out, kind of those next steps, but we're confident that we'd be able to bring some of those forward.
Okay.
So I would say that she knows that her goal is to run a budget-neutral program. So that's, they're committed to that as well.
So Mr. Colwell has a slush fund?
No, not.
Years ago, there was a slushy, but. She would have to work with the food department on that one to make sure that our food.
I mentor giving me really good ideas, not a slush fund. That was.
I had to. Thank you.
Well, that's pretty exciting too, that Special Olympics will help support, especially the first year. And then you said there's grants. How far have you guys gotten looking into that? And are they a couple-year-out grants or are they renewable grants?
Yep, there's three different grants that I've been looking at. One of them is taking applications for actually next school year. Some of them are so far as like over the summer. There's a couple through like the Minnesota Institute of Art has a couple, Special Olympics has one in general. And then there is one additional one that's actually, the purpose is helping to start unified art programs. Some of them are kind of like, as you apply, you get the funding, and then others, it takes a couple of months for them to consider. But considering that we're really trying to go for the unified program, we're really hopeful that we would be given opportunity to start one.
And have you talked and partnered with the high school group, then I'm assuming as well, since you're communicating with Mr. Colwell and?
We have communicated a little bit with our adapted sports. Who's our adapted coach again? Craig? Craig, yeah. He says that he'd be willing to help us out once it was up and running.
Okay. Yeah, because our high school program's fantastic, and so they know just what needs to be done to get a program like that started off the right way, so. Any other comments?
I think it's a great club to bring forward. There's a lot of opportunity for, for all the students and staff and parents involved, so.
Well, thank you for your hard work, and we look forward to hearing more in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we're going to bring Monticello Middle School Dean of Students back up, Katie Frick, and seventh grade English teacher Ashley Kennedy to talk about the Magic Dance Company new club proposal.
Hi. Ashley, my name is Ashley Kennedy. I am the English seventh teacher at Monticello Middle School. Yeah, so I'm going to propose a new club, the Magic Dance Company. First, let's start with some of the objectives I came up with. First and foremost, the core route of this club would be to bring dance to every student interested in six to eight. Dance can really be an exclusive kind of atmosphere. So therefore, we're trying to make it a little bit more inclusive, creating a no-trial, all levels from beginner to advanced kind of club. Most importantly, we're thinking about the kind of differentiation in groups, dance to create an inclusive production as well as environment. My end goal and what I kind of predict, is this, am I close enough? Can this be heard? Okay, perfect, sorry. My end goal is I hope to create a showcase so students can promote their hard work as well as kind of like the different styles. I was lucky enough to be taught and I went to college to dance, I have a minor in dance to be studying and a variety of different styles. So kind of creating that differentiation of, there are multiple variables I've kind of for dances that students are interested in as well as kind of creative outlooks for levels. As I say, kind of to students, to let students collaborate and a positive experience, I said our end goal is to create this collaborative kind of showcase. If not to the public or to like parents, at least to each other, show what it kind of looks like when we're able to kind of create different dances but come together and create at least one performance as a production. Once again, to kind of foster creativity, encouraging students to promote innovative approaches to academia. I don't know how many people here are comfortable dancing, but you can kind of have. You, when you're moving your body in different kind of formats, you kind of meet that kind of adversity, which you also meet in the academic profession. So it's kind of thinking of different ways to go about, not only finding ways to move your body, but you can kind of place that into the classroom where your arm is making these challenges. How can we encourage and how can we get out of our comfort zone to become a bit better as not only like, as I said, right now this is a dancer kind of thing, but as a student as well? How can we foster confidence in our uncomfortability? And that kind of goes with my last objective, to let students step out of their comfort zone without the pressure of perfection. A lot of the dance, especially in the performance aspect, you are being watched and you kind of feel, especially in middle school, you think you're in this huge fishbowl where students are watching you, your peers are always watching you, but when you're able to step out of that comfort zone and kind of be in an atmosphere where you're just encouraged to try, encouraged to move, and not necessarily be perfect, it kind of can build that confidence and once again, that collaborative environment, which is what is my objective for this school. As I said, I have been thankfully taught and have studied many styles of dance since I was very young. As I start this club, these are the ones that I think would be most interested for the students. Jazz, hip-hop specifically, lyrical contemporary musical theater. I did a lot of swing. I don't know, as I said, we're doing for middle school, I'm not sure how many of them want to be dancing with partners. Right now they're in like seating charts, they don't want to be next to a boy, so I don't know how that would go. Ballet, and I have done pom. These are some schedules. Recently, since this has been posted, I switched to Monday practices. It'll go about three to four, and hopefully, as I said, one performance, whether that be for public, parents, or just for students. Yeah, and so since my end goal is to have about 10 different performances, it truly depends on the numbers I get, it could just be six different groups. I just kind of showed what it would look like to make sure that each student was getting a specific routine for their interests as well as collaborative, collaboratively working, as I said, towards that kind of production, which would be all the students, as well as getting taught on their level and taught on their interests, so not every student. So that every student is felt like their needs are being met. Yeah, these are kind of like really fine details. I'll kind of brief over them in case you, if you want to hear, students can communicate through the app band. This is where they're going to like make sure they have their videos to communicate with each other, but also to be practicing at home. Once again, as I said, our goal is kind of be differentiating to making sure every student has kind of a need or an interest met in dance. So they not, they're not all going to be learning the exact same routines. Students are going to be split into different groups based off their interest and based off their skill level. As I mentioned at the very beginning, our goal is to create performance of a minimum of 10 dances. If not, it really depends on what numbers we get. Each dancer will perform in the production piece, a production piece is just kind of that first entrance number, and hopefully two other dances, just so they can kind of get into their initial year, learning what it is like to not only have the challenge of like remembering, but challenge of moving your body. Eventually, I'm not sure if this is the year to do it, as I said, it's going to be initial year if this gets accepted. I would love to give opportunities for students to learn to choreograph under, standing, it will be under my supervision. I think choreographing, especially if you've been doing dance for a while, offers a unique opportunity to, once again, we kind of talked about the, or I talked about, the adversity of thinking outside of the box. So now you've been taught to learn and to think and to follow, but now to get creative, which as I said, could kind of go into the academic kind of classroom portion. I would like to give that opportunity, whether or not this will be the founding year to do that. Once again, most importantly, I think, as I said, middle school is a very like, you think everybody's watching, it's a fishbowl environment, letting students step out of their comfort zone and feel comfortable in doing so and supported by their peers. That is probably the biggest goal of this. And those are just some things I got to think about, especially like scheduling like that last performance, what would that look like if this club was able to be proposed? I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Oh, the next one's just my posters.
Oh.
If you want to see them.
She designed a lot of posters. Ms. Kennedy was really excited about bringing this idea forward. She's a newer teacher at our school and dance is one of her passions. And so when she came with this idea, I thought it was a really great opportunity to get some of our students involved who maybe don't want the full-time commitment of like a high school dance commitment or newer. This would be ran as your typical club at our school. So with that per our contract with so many students is a certain amount of stipend, so we would be able to run cost-neutral with this club as well. And we already have a lot of students who are very interested in it as well if it's approved. Any questions?
When would you be looking for approval?
I mean, the sooner the better. I think the original on this one, if we, we could make a change to the agenda here or, and have action, because this one, I know that you wanted to get started a little earlier. So, I mean, if you, if you wanted to talk about it, if you had any questions or any hesitations, we could, we could talk about that. Otherwise, so then we had thought about bringing the action forward at the next board meeting. So.
Be flexible with that start date too.
Okay.
It's nothing that's set in stone.
Well, let's just start it at the, we'll keep our standard, but I know that I did see the, some of the dates there, so I was wondering if they wanted to have it a little bit faster, but we'll, we'll keep our same board format and schedule.
Questions?
Yeah, a quick question for you, Ms. Kennedy. Have you ran a dance program like this before?
Yes, actually, this is pretty much mimicked from, I ran in college. I ran, was the largest dance organization at the University of Minnesota Morris. It's called Dance Ensemble, and it's very much so inspired by this. I ran that my junior through my, I did five years, so five years, where I was the co-chair, where I had to organize about 30 different dances and divide them all by that guaranteed. Major difference is I would be choreographing all these dances at this level for the beginning. I would, as I said, I want some students eventually co-choreograph. But no, I also currently coached dance over at a competitive studio in Becker. So I am quite used to coaching dance and teaching dance, but for the collaborative like club atmosphere, I did this in college, and that's kind of what I have luckily been able to model this after, just knowing that I will do a little bit more, a lot more like hands-on in the fostering of that creativity.
Just so that when we talk about this before we vote on it, I want to make sure I really understand what we're trying to do. So you started out talking about, from what I heard, that dance is an exclusive type of program typically.
Yes.
So what I'm hearing is you want to make this more inclusive, available for more people. Is that why you would want to utilize the school board to support this rather than doing something like what you're doing in Becker?
I think what I do in Becker is, as I said, it's a competitive dance studio, where if you are fortunate enough to be able to afford not only the time, but like the financial reasons to be on competitive teams, it's great. And I said, that's kind of how I grew up. My goal kind of with this, as I said, I was supposed to be inclusive in the sense of, as I said, dance can really be not inclusive in the sense of financial abilities or time. Some students don't have the time to put into those competitive aspects. So I'm hoping just by asking for like an hour a week to be able still perform and like come together, collaborative, be able to move their body and be able to come with a performance would allow more students to feel comfortable if they've never danced before, especially at like the seventh grade level, where you already think that students are looking at you, picking out like kind of your flaws, feeling more comfortable without having to do the commitment nor the. nor the financial, financial commitment as well. I hope that answered your question a bit.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
And if I could, I'd just step back even higher, and I'd go 10,000-foot view on this one. And, you know, we have, you know, reduced middle school programming over the last couple of years. And so we've asked our community ed, we've asked our middle school administration, we've asked our high school administration to be creative in offering activities and clubs. And I know at one time, there was the, a goal to, you know, have intermural programs and things like that. And so these, these are our steps of, of kind of doing business in a new way, where middle school and high school activities take a, they do offer a burden front to the general fund, and we're really trying to train our people. Like, we still want these opportunities, how can we run them budget-neutral, but still give kids the opportunity to shine in some new ways. So just some different ways, and some, some activities are more readily and easily available to offer at a budget-neutral. But those are good, because sometimes those are your niches too, to not competing for the same basketball court. You can do both activities in a different space, and that from a, from a business standpoint is a good, is a good model from, from how I'm looking at them. They're doing what we've asked and finding those markets, places that won't compete with the exact same spaces that are so hard to schedule.
Give the board an idea, too. So we offer a lot of different clubs at our middle school level. This would be kind of our first movement-based one, to be honest with you, but they're $40, so a lot more affordable for families, especially if they just kind of want to get into it, not as big of a commitment. But we have like our crochet club, we do our American Sign Language Club. Like, so we have a lot of different variations. This would just be an additional, additional one for students to be able to choose from.
So do you expect this to also be a fee of $40?
Yeah, so it'd go under our clubs. So that is our $40 fee for our clubs.
I definitely see where this will fill a huge gap that we have because of not being able to do as much middle school activities like we have before in the past. But then also your point on time, class sizes are only so big for those dance studios, especially the competitive ones. There's tryouts, and there's a lot of students that maybe didn't make the team that they wanted to be on, and then the financial commitment. So I do feel like it fills a big gap, which is awesome. So thank you for your hard work.
And then unlike a dance studio, you wouldn't have costumes, right? It'd be something like less financially.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you very much.
All right, and that brings us to the end of our board meeting. We will be having a work session following this. We will reconvene in five minutes, but we are adjourning the school board meeting at 5:47 PM. Thank you for coming.